So we're going to get started. I would like everybody to begin with, could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing for a moment of silence. And I would like to ask that everybody please take into special consideration the members of our military during the moment of silence. You may be seated now, thank you. All right, well, good evening, everybody. I appreciate everybody that came out tonight. I'm Representative Brad Roy, and I represent the 6th Legislative District. I've been in the State House for about seven years. I'm on the Insurance Committee, the Finance Committee, the State Government Committee, and the Human Services Committee. And I've enjoyed representing the area. And we got to talk, Representative Brad and Representative James, we got to talk, and we thought since the Titusville community is composed of really three different counties, if you think about it, we're a mile away from county line that way and a mile that way. And all the people around here go to the same schools, they go to the same hospital, they go to the same state park. So I figured we might as well have a joint town hall meeting. The three of us work very closely together in Harrisburg, and it's important to remember that people don't live their lives by legislative districts. So we try to think of things regionally, and we try to work together. And it's been a great pleasure working with Kathy and Lee both. So I'm glad that we're having this joint meeting.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you for arranging everything this evening. And thanks to all of you for being here tonight. I'm Representative Kathy Brad, and I represent the 65th Legislative District. And I'm sure all of you know that with redistricting, the 65th will be changing, and it will encompass six townships in Crawford County. And I'm very honored and looking forward, if I win the election, to be serving in the area. And as Representative Roy said, we all work very closely together. As a matter of fact, in Harrisburg, we all sit in the same room. So we, in the northwest, try very hard to make sure that we're representing our constituents here to the best of our ability. This is my fifth term in Harrisburg, and I serve on the Education Committee. I serve as Chairman of the Subcommittee on Special Education. I serve on Finance, Environmental Resources, and Energy, and Veterans Affairs, and Emergency Preparedness Committee. I also serve on several caucuses, and I'm looking forward to another term and serving here in Titusville. And I did bring some literature, my last newsletter, if you want to know a little bit about me and where I stand on issues, you can take one of those newsletters out there. It'll give you a good idea of where I stand on issues. And hopefully, you'll be asking some questions tonight, that you'll learn some more information about all of us and where we stand on issues. Representative James?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming out. My name is Lee James. I live in Wall City. That's part of Inango County, which is the 64th District. When Brad said he wanted to put this together, I said, "Well gee, why don't I come up too?" Because an awful lot of the folks live just south of Titusville, which I see some heads nodding like this. So apparently, I have some constituents in the audience. I'm at the beginning of my second year down there, which makes me what they call a freshman. I find that I love the job very much. Really appreciate getting out of bed and going to work in the morning. Everybody remembers that when they had their first job, I'm sure. So it's an honor to serve you, and I appreciate that. When I'm at work in Harrisburg, which is usually Monday through Wednesday, in addition to being on the floor of a session, I'm on the Finance Committee, the Local Government Committee, which is particularly important around here, that's townships, boroughs, smaller cities, that sort of thing. Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness, which, as it turns out, is a very important committee, especially when things like Hurricane Sandy come ashore. And it's good to be part of the program, and I would ask for your support in my reelection campaign, which actually got underway this last weekend. Brad?
All right. To begin the presentation tonight, we're going to talk briefly about the budget that Governor Corbett recently presented to us. Every year, the governor is required by law to make a budget proposal, and this year he did that, when was it, about a week ago? That was a week ago today, I think he made it. And it's important to remember that it's only a budget proposal. It's not a, we haven't voted on anything yet, and there's nothing, you know, final on it or anything like that. It's just a starting point. And Representative James, he brought these neat charts from Harrisburg. So Lee, would you like to go over one of the charts with the audience?
Sure. Glad to do that. Would you rather hear about spending or revenues? I'll start over here. So true, unlike the federal government, where we operate a little differently. Well, as you can see, the largest area here in the sort of medium blue is personal income tax, and that represents 40% of the entire revenues which the state generates to end up over on the other chart. I think it's important to note that Governor Corbett, who is now beginning his fourth year, has, he promised to bring in all his budgets on time, which is by the 30th of June. He's done that for three years, and that's our intent again this year, too, to have the budget done by the end of June, as he promised. This has all been done without any increase in tax. Income taxes are still 0.0307, as you probably know. The purple area there is sales and use tax, which is set at 6%. That also has not been increased, not changed. That brings in 32% of total revenues. That's about 72% total. There is a cigarette tax. For those of you who smoke, thank you very much, we need the revenue. No, I'm kidding. We actually have a representative group that's part of the anti-smoke crusade, so forget I said that. In any case, that's pretty near a billion dollars' worth of income. 1% is capital stock and franchise tax, which is slowly being worked out of the system. I believe it's by 2016 that will go away. So we'll have to find another $300 million from some of the area. Let's hope that the economy picks up. Inheritance tax represents approximately 3%. Corporate net income tax is $2.4 billion. That's about 9% of our total income. That's also on the block to be lower. The House Representative's been working very hard on that. There's actually a plan to reduce that from 9.99% to 6.99% of all corporate revenues. It's going to take place, assuming it gets passed through the Senate and all that, takes place, it's going to be phased in over, I believe, a 10-year period. Because it's going to be very hard to make up $800 million less income. But I think it's pretty important for anyone who owns a business, or if you, you know, if you work for other people, it's important that the entrepreneurs who are taking the risk make some money. Because if they don't, they won't be there next year to provide employment for your friends and for yourself. That's probably enough detail on that. I'll turn this over to Brad, and he can talk, or Kathy, and they can talk about it.
This is the first time I've seen this chart. And keep in mind, this is last year's general funding, general fund spending. As you can see, public welfare is the largest piece of the pie at $10.96 billion, and education is at $10 billion, at 35%. And the first year I was in Harrisburg, education actually used to be the biggest part of the spending in the state of Pennsylvania. What we've seen over the last 10 years is that public welfare has overtaken education. A lot of, the biggest issue that affects spending and public welfare is Medicaid. We have an aging population in the state of Pennsylvania. We cover all our children now in Pennsylvania who do not have insurance. That's all medical assistance. And with our aging population, if you need skilled nursing care and you do not have the insurance to pay for that, that's going to come out of those public welfare dollars. So that's where we're seeing the biggest increase in the budget, has been in the last 10 years in medical assistance. And that remains true for this year as well. And then Corrections is our next slice, and the debt service. When Governor Corbett took office, we were $4 billion in debt, and we've removed that $4 billion. Higher education, $1.66 billion, and all the other is 2.68. And this year's budget, there's the proposal, and as Representative Roy stated, this is only a proposal, it's the first step. In my 10 years, we've never totally agreed with the governor's proposed budget. We have made changes along the way. The governor, again this year, as well as Governor Rendell, in his proposals, maybe zeroed out some line items, and those may be line items that are, are line items that we want to continue funding. So the leaders will get together, they'll agree on a spend number, and after consulting with the caucus. And then, once we agree on that spend number, and what we're going to see as revenue, and as I said, he proposed a 3.3% increase, there are some of us who are concerned that we might not see a 3.3% increase in revenues. So that's, this is the first step, the governor's proposal. And then the upcoming months, hopefully, we will have a budget in place by June 30. This governor, as Representative Lee has said, or Representative James has said, has presented a budget that we've been able to vote on and give to the people of Pennsylvania on time, which is, when I was served under Rendell, we never had an on-time budget. So that's a good thing for the state of Pennsylvania. Representative Roy?
Thank you, Kathy. Now, the budget proposal the governor made, the spending categories and the revenue categories, they are pretty similar to last year. But the numbers, $29.4 billion would be the spend number for his proposal. That's about $927 million more than the current fiscal year budget. That's about a 3.5% increase, about 3.3% increase. And again, it is just a starting point. Now, I'm going to go off-script here just for a second, not to put anybody on the spot, but I would like to recognize Dr. Alexander's here, the President of Pitt. And would you like to say a few words? Come on up. I feel like Bob Barker. Come on down.
I'm not running for office, but I would just like to thank our representatives for being here this evening. I know that you think very highly of, not only the region, but of Pitt Titusville, and what it means to the community here in Crawford County. So we certainly would ask you to keep us in mind as you go through your work during the next few months. And we thank you for all the support you've given us over the years. So thank you for being here this evening, and I hope everyone has a good time.
All right. Thank you so much. And I think everybody in this room agrees that this campus is very important for this community, for the state of Crawford, Inango, and Warren County. This campus is important. There's a lot of economic activity because of this campus. A lot of students get a good education because of this campus. And when you think of Titusville, you think of the Pitt campus, you think of Drake Well. It's just, it's just part of our, part of our community here. So I'm sure the three of us are going to do everything we can during the budget process to make sure that, you know, we can do everything we can to help out here. Now, when everybody came in, everybody should have received a card. If you didn't get a card, well, we have some staff here. We have Claudine, where are you at, Claudine? Claudine's in the back, then Carrie's in the back. Wait for your hand, Carrie. And then we have, Vicki is here, and Kristy was here, wasn't she?
Yeah.
There she is, in the bathroom. So how we're going to do is to kind of keep things organized, we would like to ask that everybody please, if you have a question, fill out a card, and then just kind of hold it up in the air, and somebody will collect your card. And we're going to go through the questions in the order that we get them. And that way, you know, there's a little bit of order to it. I've found from having town hall meetings in the past, if I just take a show of hands, I can't keep track of who's already asked a question, who hasn't. And we want to make sure everybody that wants to ask a question gets a chance to ask a question. So we're going to start with the first question that we got, and this is from Bill. And Bill's question is, "What is the current status of liquor privatization bill?" And the current status of that, he has some more details on here, but basically, we passed a bill in the House about almost a year ago that would privatize the wine and liquor store system. Most states have already done that years ago. Pennsylvania is one of the few states that hasn't done that. And I supported that legislation. I think these two also did. And, you know, when I think of government, I think that government should do the things that individuals can't do for themselves, and government shouldn't be doing things that can be done in the private sector. In most other states, businesspeople have an opportunity to open up a wine store and sell wine, and it just seems like that's what we should do here in Pennsylvania. Now, we passed the bill in the House, it went to the Senate, and the Senate hasn't really done anything with it. Now, there are negotiations taking place between the House and the Senate. They're trying to come up with a compromise bill that would have enough votes to pass. We want to make sure that we don't put little, you know, beer distributors out of business. We want to make sure that big, you know, big-box stores don't totally have monopoly on the market. We want to make sure we're being fair with everybody. Do you have anything you want to add to that, either of you guys?
No, I don't think so. Was the donor, do you think the question was answered? Do you have any?
Yeah, I think it was, the situation that we run into is we're very much in limbo right now, as far as any direction that we're going to go with our business. So any slight direction that you folks go and the bill goes depends upon profitability or us going out of business. So very much interested in seeing where that bill stands, and Brad, we talked to you in the past about this, and we appreciate your support. Just don't throw us under the bus. Give us an out, is all we're looking for.
I think one of the biggest concerns when we looked at the legislation was the beer distributors making sure that they were going to be protected in all of this, as far as your business. So I think that the bill that we passed in the House was fair, and at the end of the day, I think the beer distributors were pretty happy with it because of the options that you had right up front. So we don't know what's going to happen, you know, and it has been stuck in the Senate. But I'm sure through this budget process, that's another piece of legislation that's going to be worked out before the end of this session. We'll see.
Well, I just, I saw that it had been mentioned again the other day in an article, so I see that it's back on the table.
It's still out there.
Very well to add to that, but it gets mentioned about daily down in Harrisburg. As Brad said, it's still in the Senate, being rolled over at that end. I noticed you have one other question on here about vehicle registration. It's two-year now.
Yeah, well-
Stay at two-years, as far as I know.
Well, it's a one-year vehicle registration now. The proposal was to go to a two-year registration regol, which basically cuts revenue in half for another business.
You are, of course, correct.
Yeah, that had our attention, and that's part of the transportation bill, obviously. So, yeah, that had our, our, yeah.
Because I want to know, but it's one year.
So we've seen that kind of has went to the wayside, and there's some increases coming with some title transfers and some license work, that type of thing. So I haven't seen anything on the side of changing that to a two-year regol, which I'm happy about, but don't know where that's going to stand down the road. That's still being discussed.
I think you can expect some increases in, increases in fees on your licensing and your registration, as well as your gas and diesel. So I think you can surely expect that down the road.
Okay. The second question is from James. I'm summarizing questions just to save time here, a little bit. The question basically asks, "If a, if a commercial truck has a weight limit to go over a bridge, how come there can be two trucks going side by side with each other that both aren't seeing that weight limit?" And that's a good point. I mean, some of the recently posted bridges, one truck can't go over, but you could have two trucks, a weigh a pound, less than that, go over the bridge, you know, right behind each other or right beside each other. I'm not an engineer, I don't know that much about weight limits. Can any of you offer anything on that?
It's a good point.
And personally, when the Department of Transportation put weight-restricted postings on 1,000 bridges, you know, a couple months ago, I didn't think it was necessary. Some of those bridges hadn't been inspected for, you know, two or three years. It seems like if something needed posted with a weight restriction, it would have been done right after it got inspected, but that wasn't the case. Do you have anything you want to add on that, James?
Well, it's just, it's the same bridge. If it's posted 22 tons or 25 tons, that eliminates a triax. That's a 328. If you can have two 80,000-pound sound lines on the same bridge, side by side, what's the logic there?
Yeah, I agree with you. And now, what PennDOT says, you know, the heavier the vehicles are, the harder it is on the bridges, and they want to have, you know, with less weight on a bridge, a bridge will last longer before it has to get replaced. But I agree with you. Sometimes you see a sign that says "one truck at a time" on a bridge. Every once in a while, you see that.
Did anybody pay attention with that?
Probably not. But it is a concern, and the three of us, we're very concerned, because you figure everybody that's trying to, you know, deliver, you know, sand and gravel, or deliver milk, or, you know, whatever commodity, it's, it's hard on manufacturers to get their product out of the factory. It's hard to get raw materials in with all the weight restrictions. It's hard for, you know, people involved in, you know, logging and sand and gravel and everything else.
Actually, I think that there are surveys that PennDOT actually does conduct as far as traffic flow and how many roads, or how many vehicles on a particular road at one time, and what, what size of vehicles do go over bridges and what time. Obviously, that's how they determine how they're going to structure a bridge. But I haven't heard, that's, we always have meetings with the Region One engineer. I'm not sure, that should be coming up soon in my office, and certainly, that's a good question that I can ask the Region One Director, is, do they take that into consideration? But certainly, when they're looking at bridges and when they're replacing and rebuilding, they are taking into consideration what weight is going over that bridge.
Well, you're detouring everybody up Route 89 from the one in Centerville. The bridge is supposed to be in Centerville.
Well, we had a lot of issues with the bridge postings.
Narrow road.
We had a lot of issues with the bridge postings before the transportation bill was passed. There were several bridges that we were never notified, and I know I meet with Bill Pettit and our supervisor in Warren County, and we go over the priority list. And many of those bridges that were posted were not on anybody's priority list. So I question myself why they were restricted.
Okay. And keep in mind, any of us are available, you know, we're going to try to get through, you know, all the questions that we get tonight, and we have your contact information. If you'd like, you know, more of an explanation, or if you'd like to talk about something in a fuller extent, you can contact our office as well. But we're going to try to, you know, not to cut anything short, but we're going to try to make sure we get through all the questions. And we can revisit something if we have more time, but I just want to make sure that we get through the questions. The next question is from Nathan, and the question is, "Is there any legislation that could come to pass that could prevent school boards from rejecting charter school applications just to make the process difficult and costly?" Kathy knows quite a bit about, you know, educations. Kathy's on the Education Committee. I used to be on the Education Committee. It's my understanding that if somebody wants to start a charter school, the school board has to approve it. If the school board rejects it, there's an appeals process where, you know, you can appeal it and get that overturned and start your charter school anyways. But that's all I really know about that process. Either, do you two want to?
I've represented the TDU charter school, and I am very much for school choice in education and giving parents a school choice. School boards do try to prevent charter schools from opening their doors. There is a process that lays it out, and if I, if you don't mind me using TDU as an example, when TDU first applied, the Warren County School District wanted to reject their plan, they hired an attorney, they appealed to Harrisburg. Any charter can appeal to Harrisburg as of now. But the change is, the legislation passed the House, and it's now over in the Senate. And they actually want to create a board of higher education folks to determine whether or not a charter should be able to exist. The process is already difficult and costly. You know, for TDU, it was all volunteers in the community that they were determined to get that charter school. And quite frankly, I'm very proud of that charter school because it's a blue-ribbon school, and it's one of only 15 blue-ribbon schools in the state. And so it wasn't easy for that charter school to open its doors. There's more students there now than when it was part of Warren County School District. But it's certainly a subject that, you know, could be time-consuming, and I'd be more than happy to sit down with anyone, whether you're, you know, pro or anti-charter, and discuss the issue further.
I think some of the local school districts, if they haven't already started, will soon be starting to improvise their own cyber schools. This has to do with the fact that, at first, they fought it, but I realize that a lot of parents, homeschool parents and other parents who are concerned about the safety of their children, whatever the reason is, they're sending their kids to cyber schools, they're going to continue to do it. And so to answer that, rather than lose the child to Philadelphia or Pittsburgh or wherever they're going, I think you can look for your own, your own schools to start their own cyber.
I can just respond to that. We've had a lot of debate and talks and hearings on this on the Education Committee. And that is the direction that a lot of school districts, brick and mortar, public school districts, are going, trying to establish their own cyber schools. The problem is, when I talk to parents, if they don't want to send their child, and not all, you know, it's all an individual decision, but a lot of parents who have talked to me about this issue, if they don't want to send their child to the public school today, they're not going to want to choose the school district's cyber school either. So there's a difference between cyber charter and brick-and-mortar charter. So the school in TDU is brick-and-mortar charter, and there's a difference. Cyber is exactly that. It's all online, and you can cyber school your child anywhere. But to get children back into those school districts, many school districts are trying to establish their own cyber, cyber schools, so that they don't lose those students.
I'll be honest, we're taking these cards, we're going to go out of order by one here, because we have two more very related things, as long as we're on the same topic. Lori has a question about, "Does the funding follow a student from state regardless of attending a public or charter school?" Well, how that basically works, if a student goes to a public school and- Well, how that basically works, if, if a student, uh, goes to a public school and they decide that they're going to go to a cyber school, cyber charter school, or a regular brick and mortar charter school, the, the school district, they basically pay the, well, they do pay the tuition for that student to go to the other school. Now, the disadvantage of that is obviously the school district has to write a check to the, the charter school. The advantage is the school district no longer has that student that they have to educate, that there's a worksheet that school districts have. A, a school district takes their entire school district budget, and with the worksheet, they subtract out different costs, or fixed costs for the district, the district has regardless of how many students there are, and they basically go through the whole worksheet, subtracting things out. And just in ballpark figures, around here, if you look at Crawford, Banango, Warren, you know, Erie County, Mercer County, around here, the typical school district spends about $12,000 per student, if you look at the school district budget, divide it by how many students there are, and the charter school tuition usually works out to be around $9,000. So, if today, a student decides to leave the T D U school district, that would cost the school district about $9,000, but the school district got $12,000, you know, has $12,000 in the budget for that student, so, you know, now they have $3,000 left over, basically, they can spend on the remaining students. So, uh, that's kind of how that works. Now, the next question is kind of related too, is, uh, they want to know, uh, who is this? Ann Wagner wants to know what our position is on charter schools and what kind of help is available. Now, Ann is the mayor, where are you at, Ann?
I'm right here.
Yeah, she's...
I think we'd like to talk to Ann, Ann.
Yes.
Probably more than happy to talk to you.
Okay, because for people that are familiar with it, up in Spartansburg, the, the Cory School District is talking about closing the Spartansburg School, and is that, that's what prompted, you're the charter, the charter school over there, isn't it?
Right. Um, the reason being is the distance from T D U to the, the school district wanted to send the students to Youngsville. And actually, I was involved, uh, in, in helping those parents, they had to hire an attorney, and there's, I would encourage you, if you're looking at a charter school, to contact the T D U charter school and sit down and talk with those folks, and so that they can walk you through that whole process of what they had to do. But to caution you, if that Senate bill passes, and even if it doesn't, we have this, um, procedure that we do, um, for education, a lot of bills that don't get passed, both by the House and the Senate, they get rolled into what we call an omnibus bill, um, and it's passed, that big omnibus education bill is usually passed along with the budget. So, there, that's a bill that's been just sitting over there in the Senate, if it doesn't get passed, and that's House Bill 618, and I think they've done some changes over in the Senate, but that bill will probably be rolled into a huge education omnibus bill that will be passed, uh, during the budget. But I'd be more than happy, uh, to talk to you afterwards and the whole process.
Okay, uh, shifting gears here a little bit, the, uh, the next question, uh, looks like it's about a five-part question. This is from Jeff. The first part of the question is, what is your view on Governor Corbett's proposal to defer some of the Commonwealth's contributions to the pension plan? Isn't this what Governor Rendell did to help create the shortfall we have now? Uh, yeah, it is part of the governor's proposal, and, and again, it's just a proposal, but part of the budget proposal would be to, uh, basically change the law that was passed in 2010 to reduce the amount of money that the state has to put into the pension plan, and I think it was around, uh, $200 million is what the deferral would be. And the advantage of doing that would be, it would free up more money to spend in other areas this year. The disadvantage, obviously, is next year or some later year, we'd have to add that $200 million back in, because every dollar that needs to be paid into that plan eventually needs to be paid into it, and I'm not comfortable with that. I think we should be funding the pension plan adequately. I do think we need pension reform, because the plans as they are now are totally unsustainable. But I'll let these guys talk on that as well.
Kathy points to Pam.
I just want to give you a turn.
No, thanks. Uh, the caller that the governor is recommending is admittedly somewhat troublesome too, and I think part of the reason he's doing that is he recognizes if he meets the requirements, such as they're laid out now, it will either do one of two things, it will take away, in order, in order for that piece of the pie to be bigger, this piece probably going to have to be smaller, okay? Or, our property taxes will have to go up. Now, that can't be too popular, at least not down in Lowell City. So, he's trying to slow the process down while the General Assembly gets its act together to pass some good pension reform, and that's the 800-time gorilla in the room now. It's up to a 50, roughly $50 billion problem. It's an obligation that the state has, so we can't just say, well, we're not doing that. So, a new, a new plan has to be developed to, first, stop the bleeding, and second, deal with the obligation.
Um, that's, that's a good question, and it's something we've been tossing around for quite a while, pension reform, and, uh, the talks have increased, um, on the House side. I, I can tell you that in the House, the conversation as far as pension reform is for new employees. That's, that's the talk. Uh, and just remember, this is the governor's proposal, but any discussions that we have had in the House, pension reforms would start with new employees. Now, saying that today, does that mean, you know, that's what's going to happen once legislation is introduced? I don't know. Uh, but that's been the discussion in the House, that pension reform would start with new employees going to a defined contribution instead of a defined benefit. And Representative James talked about the $50 million debt. Billion, I'm sorry, did I say million? Billion, $50 billion debt. Now, under the governor's proposal, this is kind of like easier for me to understand, maybe it's, hopefully it's easier for you to understand this one. Say like we're taking $3 billion to pay into that pension fund. Well, the interest rate is at seven and a half, and we're going to be paying $4 billion in interest. So, where is that getting us? Uh, it's just getting us deeper in the hole. So, I think we really need to be serious and bite the bullet here, uh, and yes, does it make this pie move around, uh, but I don't think we can continue, uh, down this road of not addressing this pension problem. And I think it's becoming, uh, to some of us alarming, and, uh, we're very concerned where this pension debt is taking us. So, uh, we'll see where it goes, but that's been the discussion in the House.
Well, we had them pass out a little bit of information here. Some of these got stapled wrong, but if you look at the sheet at the top of it, if it says PERS, P-S-E-R-S, that's the, the school employee retirement system. The, the first page of the handout here, yours might be stapled wrong, you might have SERS before CERS, but it's PERS. If you go to the page that says PERS, and if you look at the year 2000, uh, the, the state had to put in 1.9% of employee payroll into the pension plan. Well, then in 2001, the multiplier got changed. It used to be employees got credit for, you know, 2% for every year of service, and that's multiplied by how many years they worked, and that's multiplied by their final average salary. Well, that was changed to 2.5% for most, most school employees, and state employees too. Well, anyways, it's had an impact on the contribution rate. The stock market crashed back right after the terrorist attack, the stock market crashed right before the recent recession that we're in impacted that too. Well, if you look at the contribution rates here, uh, every year, the, the amount that the, the state needs to put in is going up, and we passed legislation, I voted against it in 2010, but if you look at your chart, in 2010, we passed pension reform legislation then. Well, back in 2010, for every dollar the school district employee was paid, the school district had to put in 5.64 cents. Well, then it crept up to 8.65 in 2011, and I'm not going to read all the numbers here, but this school year, we're at 21.4%. Well, if we don't do anything with the pension plan, if we do no reform at all, you can see in your handout, by the year 2020, we're going to have to put in 32 cents for every dollar that an employee is paid. That, that's not sustainable, so that's, that's why we have to do the pension reform. On, on the next page, uh, you, you can see that, if you look at the total contributions that are required, this year, you know, we should be putting $2.9 billion with a B into PERS. Well, that grows to $3.6 billion next year, and again, I'm not going to read all the numbers, but go off to 2020, you know, we're, we're going to have to put $5.2 billion into PERS. Now, if you look at the chart here, yeah, if we're putting, we're, we're putting about $3 billion in this year, well, where do we come up with another $2.2 billion? You know, we're, we'd have to cut it from someplace else. If you look at the unfunded liability for PERS, you know, back in, you know, 2001, when they, before any of us were in the legislature, and they increased the benefits, the plan was over 100% funded. Well, as recently as 2007, it was about 85% funded. Well, then it dropped down to 86, what's, it went up a little bit, 86%, within 79%, 75%. Now, it's only at 69% funded. So, what that means is there's 69 cents for every dollar of pension benefit that the state owes people. And again, that, that's not very sustainable. If you look at the bottom of that page, you can see there's about 279,000 active employees paying into the PERS pension plan, and there's 194,000 who are eligible to collect pensions. Now, if you go to the next couple of pages, it's basically a similar kind of numbers, but it's with the, the SERS system, so I'm not going to go through all the numbers, but it's basically a very similar problem that we have. Now, one, a little bit, one thing a little bit different about SERS is, as of 2012, there were 106,000 employees paying into SERS, but there were 117,000, you know, annuandants and beneficiaries. So, anybody can see that if you have a pension system, that there's more people retired than there are actually working, that in and of itself is a problem, because in theory, everybody that's working for the state right now, they have to put an amount equal into the plan that exactly equals what the average person gets in a pension every month. Now, as most of us know, nearly every company out there has moved away from a defined benefit pension plan. Almost every company out there has a 401K plan, almost every nonprofit has a 40, what is it, 401B, I think it is, for the nonprofit, but they're defined contribution plans, and that's the direction the state has to go on the new employees. And we're getting a lot of resistance from the different public sector unions, you know, PSCA, you know, APSCA, SEIU, all, all the public sector unions, they don't want any changes at all of the pension plan. They, they want Act 1, what was it, Act 120 that we passed, they say, give Act 120 time to work. Well, from these numbers here, you can see it's not working, and it, it's a tough issue to deal with, because, you know, nobody, it doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter where you work, nobody wants to see, you know, any changes in salaries or benefits where you work, but the reality is, we're going to have to make changes, because this whole system is just completely collapsing. But our, our next question here is, uh, do you favor a ban on private contractors who do work for the Commonwealth from contributing to state election campaigns? I don't, I mean, everybody should be allowed to donate to campaigns. You can't really not let one person contribute and let somebody else contribute. That's just my personal feelings. Uh, I, I've always been very uncomfortable with the way campaigns are, are financed. I think there's too much money involved in the political process. I like when there's local donors that give to local candidates. Uh, I'm not as comfortable with, you know, statewide organizations, you know, donating to candidates. I'm not very comfortable with, you know, somebody from Philadelphia donating campaign money to somebody up here, you know, in our corner of the state. But to tell somebody they can't donate, uh, I don't think we could even legally do that. Either you guys?
No, I, I basically agree, I don't have any problem with private individuals, uh, giving campaign contributions.
I kind of don't remember all the wording on the question, but if corporations entered into that in any way, corporations aren't permitted to do that, but each one of you in here can, as an individual.
Okay, and the next one is, uh, what are your views? What is your view on large corporations playing one community off against another? Okay, the, the question is, uh, I don't want to say names of particular companies, but I guess the reality is, in the world of economic development, if one state offers a company, you know, some kind of a deal, like tax forgiveness for a couple of years, some other state's going to offer them tax forgiveness for, you know, five years, and then some other state's going to do it for 10 years. And if, if one state offers to, you know, build a new two-lane highway right up to the front gate of the factory somebody wants to build, well, then some other state's going to offer to build a four-lane highway, and there is kind of a, uh, almost an auction to try to, you know, get some of these companies. I, I guess my opinion is, you know, Pennsylvania, you know, we could either play, and it's not a very good game we have to play, we could say, no, we're not going to do anything, but then all the other states would, uh, you know, be in the, in the game to attract companies, or we could do the same thing that all the other states are doing, and, you know, try to get some companies to locate here.
And in the stack of questions, somebody out there, I believe, asked the exact opposite of that. What in the world is the Commonwealth doing to help promote job growth? Because everybody who runs for office says jobs, 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 guilty of it. That, what Brad said is correct, that's one of the ways that the Commonwealth or your township, well, maybe not your township, your county can attract a new business here, and that's to give them some breaks on real estate taxes. You weigh that against how many people are going to be employed, and if it looks, if the economic development people believe it's to their advantage to have more people employed, which I happen to believe, then they, they cut them some breaks on taxes. Yes, sir?
That was my question. The problem is that it's corporate welfare, and in large measure, all it is is taking away from another community where that business was located. I used to live in Washington County, there's a massive development called Softpoint, and a large percentage of those companies, all they did was relocate from Alleghen County to Washington County. That produces no new net worth to the economy, except to subsidize those businesses to relocate at taxpayer expense. And the whole thing with corporations being treated as basically citizen now due to the United decision of the Supreme Court, they, they also ought to help pay for their services that they get from the rest of society, such as their police protection, fire protection, and who added to the corporations should pay higher taxes? That leads naturally to the individual citizen then having to pay higher taxes. Whether that's fair or not, I do think it's an issue that's fair to debate, and I always automatically think that tax, low business taxes are a policy that's, that's accountable to some kind of a penicillin for problems. I mean, the cracker plant, um, beer, beer, beer.
It's not an adequate answer, but...
They had to locate somewhere, so why don't they go somewhere that, that makes best sense from a location standpoint? Just pay the damn taxes that everybody else pays in that community. What, what, how fair is it for a business to come into the community, to compete with somebody who's already there? That's why I started with Cabello, for example. There's examples where they come into an area, get the tax breaks, put the local guy out of business that's already been there for 30 years, because they're, they're paying the real estate taxes. And that's got to be handled at the legislative level and the governor's level. There's a governor's association, why don't they do that? I mean, businesses didn't used to do that, so 50 years ago, why do they have to do it now?
I understand what you're saying, and I've heard from a lot of businesses that, uh, businesses that have been established for years in communities, and they don't get those tax breaks. A lot of complaints about the K O Z zones, uh, things like that, that you're talking about, that you've had your established business for years, you don't get a tax break, all of a sudden, a business relocates to the community, and they get a tax break for 10 years, and we've seen... And we've seen, actually, recently, we don't have a lot of Koz zones anymore, is because it's been typical that businesses come in, they'll stay that 10 years, and then they'll leave, and they'll relocate. The fact is, though, you know, every state is trying to get businesses to relocate to their state, because every state, it is about jobs. Jobs create revenue in the private sector, and that's what we like. We, in free markets, we want the private sector to create those jobs. But I see the other side, too, of what you're saying, because those, especially those Koz zones, and I think that's why we haven't had any more, that does take legislation, by the way, to develop those Koz zones, and we just don't have a lot anymore, because there's a resistance because of the patterns that we've seen. But on the other side, too, you know, I belong to the International Commerce Caucus. There's a few of us in the House and in the Senate, and, you know, those, those are ways that our businesses here can market their products overseas. And so those are type of things that we do through government, and not so much that we're, those representatives from other countries are coming here, and I participated in a, one in Erie, where we had several foreign businesses come here, and where our local businesses get to go and talk with those representatives, who are, who are very knowledgeable, by the way. They do their homework upfront. They know everything about that business, and there were several business representatives from this area who went to Erie and talked to those international commerce partners to see if they can link up with companies overseas to sell their products to. And actually, I was amazed, because some of the businessmen that I know from the area, they said to me, Representative Rob, that, you just saw the tip of the iceberg. When we make a connection with them, they don't only sit with us and tell us about the businesses there that might be interested in our product, but if I go to that country, they're making travel arrangements for me, they're meeting me at the airport, they're making my hotel reservations, they're working as an interpreter. So, you know, those are things that we do through the Department of Community and Economic Development, all kinds of things, and it's really to help our businesses expand, but yes, we want to see more businesses locate here, too, because that means jobs to our economy and more revenue, more money for education and medical assistance and everything else in that chart.
All right, and it is important to remember, too, a lot of times people hear that, you know, some company doesn't pay any taxes, the company should pay their fair share, and they should pay their fair share, but, you know, when you look at the revenue chart over there, there's about $4 billion a year that, in business taxes in Pennsylvania. And, you know, that's a pretty sizable chunk of change. But anyway, we're going to try to get along here, because we're trying to get to all the different questions that we have. The next question is, what can we do to get our pre-K through 12 education costs more in line with neighboring states such as Ohio? In Pennsylvania, school spend an average of $17,000 per student, and in Ohio, school spend an average of $11,000 per student. Those numbers are actually pretty accurate. When you look at different states, sometimes people try to compare, well, gee, how come in some states, the state provides, you know, 50 or 60 percent of the budget of the school district, other states, you know, they only provide 35 percent? Well, most of the cost in a school district is for the salaries and benefits, and in Pennsylvania, you know, those are kind of on the high side. I looked up numbers on the NEA, that's the National Education Association, that's the big teachers' union in the country. The national average salary for a classroom teacher in the United States in 2012 was about $56,000. In Pennsylvania, it was $63,000. So you figure, you know, we have about 100,000 public school teachers, on average, they're making $7,000 a year more than what an average teacher in the country makes. We look at starting salaries, according to the National Education Association, the national average for starting salary for a teacher is $35,672. In Pennsylvania, the average starting salary is $41,192. So that's about, what, $5,000 or $6,000 a year more. And, you know, nothing, you know, personal against anybody working at the schools or anything, but it doesn't take much to figure out that if a school district's paying the teachers several thousand dollars a year more than what the same school across the state line will be paying, that that does make a big difference on the budget. Now, when you look at a school district like Titusville, some people, there was a question in here, if I missed it on another card, or maybe it's a card coming up, but there is a question about money following the students. We might have talked about that briefly, but one key thing to remember, when it comes to school funding, some people say, our school funding system is not fair, and we need to redo the school funding system. Well, this sounds kind of bad to say this, but I agree, our school funding system is not fair, but I don't want it to change, because our area would be devastated if we had what people would call a fair funding formula. And I'll give you an example right here. I have the numbers here for Titusville, this is a couple years old, but as of the 2011, 2012 budget, the Titusville School District, 65.4 percent of the Titusville School District budget was state tax money. If you look at Pennsylvania as a whole, the average school district in Pennsylvania gets about 35 percent of their budget covered by state tax money. So if you look at Titusville's budget, it's about $28 million, you know, do the math. If, if the state has given us 65 percent of 28 million, or they only gave us 35 percent of 28 million dollars, you know, that's several million dollars difference. And people who say, you know, when we do school funding, we should take how much funding the state puts into education, divide it by how many kids there are, and give the school districts money like that. Well, that would work out well in a wealthy area that's growing, that has a large tax base, a lot of big companies, high-paying jobs, you know, that would be great, but in an area like this, we'd be absolutely devastated if something like that would happen.
Which is why...
Thank you, Representative Roy. What Representative Roy is actually referring to is what we call, call hold harmless in the state of Pennsylvania. What hold harmless means is that our school districts are going to receive the same amount of money, at least the same amount of money, in the budget that they did the previous year. We are looking at changing that funding formula, and for those of us who depend on hold harmless in rural Pennsylvania, it hasn't been discussed a lot in public, but I can assure you, it's been discussed a lot in our caucus meetings, both in both parties, and both in the House and the Senate. We live in rural, rural areas. We have rural school districts. I don't know about the figures for Titusville, but I know in Warren, there's approximately 4,000 students. Warren County was 27th from the top in being funded, not 27, 21 from the top out of all the school districts. And, you know, if we go to a new funding formula, like Representative Roy talked about, we will lose, because the faster-growing school districts, where they have the economic base, they have three, four times the number of students that we have in our school districts. And those fast-growing school districts, and those school districts are over in eastern Pennsylvania, in Monroe Pike, in the Popinot area, where people are moving from the New York City, Delaware, New Jersey, all along the East Coast there, down on the Maryland border, they're moving up from Maryland, and down over in Cranberry Township, Butler, the Butler area. Those school districts are growing phenomenally. We are losing population in the Northwest. We lost a seat in the Northwest because of redistricting and the lack of population growth. So when we look at changing those formulas, rural Pennsylvania is not going to win at the end of the day in funding. We will lose. Nobody likes consolidation, but believe me, and we are, we are your voices there to fight against that. And as a matter of fact, on the regular ed funding formula, not one of us voted for that education formula, because we are afraid of our school district losing hold harmless funds. But those fast-growing school districts, believe me, they see how much money we're receiving from the state, and they want that money. They don't care if we don't have a tax base. I believe in equal opportunity for children in education. Our children deserve the same quality education that somebody in, I think it's either Lower or Upper Marion, in southeast PA, they spend about $27,000, 27,000 per student in that school district, with the tax base that they have. So Pennsylvania's very diverse, and I don't think we're ever going to see $27,000 per student in northwestern Pennsylvania. It's very difficult to distribute that money fairly. We know that our students in our school districts have transportation costs, a lot of our students are on the low-income level, so we're providing those school lunches for those children. But I am very cautious about changing that education formula. I'm very cautious. But we are a delegation of how many in the Northwest, and Philadelphia, and Delaware County, Montgomery County, they have as many representatives in just one county as we have in the Northwest. So it's a challenge for us. So it's a battle we're fighting. I don't think we're going to see, and we're trying to, we're going to increase education, hopefully, again this year in dollars, but it's probably not going to be what everybody wants, and it never is. It never is. No matter what we increase education dollars to, it's never, it's never enough, depending on who you talk to.
It is interesting to note that in the last year of the Rendell administration, education spending was about $9.6 billion, and that's for basic education funding, special education, student transportation, teacher retirement, pre-K, adult literacy, library funding, all the things that are in the education section of the budget. It was about $9.6 billion of state tax money. Well, that's grown. In 2011, it stayed at about $9.6 billion. It went up to $10.2 billion in 2012, I'm looking at my notes here, $10.3 billion in 2013, and this budget proposal is $10.6 billion. So the governor's proposing that we basically spend a billion dollars, billion with a B, more on education than we did in 2010 under the former governor. Now, what's missing from education is the temporary, one-time-only federal stimulus funding. You know, Pennsylvania got about a billion dollars in 2010 of the, you know, of the ARAM money, what was called the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, or whatever it was. Well, that's all borrowed money that's going to get paid off 20 years from now. The federal government gave money to the state to give to the schools. Well, you know, we have no way, well, no way to replace that funding, but when you look at the state tax dollars, you look at the chart over here, the sales tax you pay, the personal income tax you pay, the cigarette tax you pay, of that money, it used to be $9.6 billion of that state tax money was for education, now it's going to be $10.6. But anyways, our next question is from Paula, and her question is, what's the status of a possible increase in the tobacco tax? I don't think we're going to do a tax increase. I've never voted for a tax increase. I've always believed people are paying too much in taxes already, so I don't, I don't think that's going to come up. I mean, it's possible to come up, but I don't support that. And then the next question is, what's the current status of the Clean Indoor Air Act? That's the act that most people call the indoor smoking ban. And when we passed that thing, I had mixed feelings on it. I thought it was important that we passed it, but I thought it was important that we don't infringe on anybody's rights either, and it was, it was kind of a tough issue. And what ended up happening is, we passed a law that we had enough votes to pass, with exemptions for, you know, the VFW Post and American Legion and places like that, exemptions for stores that sell tobacco, things like that, we was able to pass. Now, the advantage is, about 99 percent of all commercial buildings in Pennsylvania are smoke-free now. The disadvantage is, there's still about 1 percent of the buildings where smoking is allowed, and, you know, they have employees that work there, they have people that are breathing that in, but my gut feeling is, I don't think it's going to even come up for a vote. When we passed the thing with the limitations, there was barely enough votes to pass it. I, I don't see us, I don't see it actually passing. You guys want to talk on that?
I don't see it coming up for a vote, and quite frankly, I think you pointed out, Representative James, that that fund is, the revenues are decreasing, because when you raise a tax on cigarettes, people do stop smoking, and supposedly, that's the goal, is to have people stop smoking, and that is happening, so we're losing revenue in that fund, because people aren't buying tobacco.
There is a bill, keep going, there is a bill that's right now in committee to tighten up on the exemptions that Representative Roy mentioned. Will it come out? I don't know. If it does come out, does it pass on the floor? I'm not sure. What was your question?
I'm just going to say that hopefully, with the increase, the bold decrease in smokers is good, too, but then hopefully that'll be a decrease in the Medicare, health, health costs of illnesses that are reduced because of the fact that there are less smokers.
Right, if we'd all just pay attention on a certain job, right?
He told us. One other quick thing, I think the most important thing, like some of the work that you do, just educating kids not to start smoking in the first place, is probably, you know, the most effective thing to do. If, if you ask a group of legislators, you know, would you support, you know, us going around town, kids, they shouldn't start smoking, there's probably all 203 House members agree with that. Well, then you start talking about smoking bans and tax increases, and you get all kinds of different numbers there. But we're going to try to move along a little faster, especially me and I talk a lot. We still have about four questions to get to. The next question is from Emily, and it's, welfare to work, or, welfare to work plans are in place to increase the number of employed persons, which in turn will secure the revenue component driven by personal income tax. Will this have a direct effect on the number of people who are dependent on welfare? I don't quite catch what the question is that you're asking, maybe Emily could briefly elaborate, but obviously, I think all three of us support people getting off of welfare, people entering the workforce, and whatever we can do to kind of nudge people along, because government can do nothing unless they have money. The only way government gets money is if they tax people, so the more people we tax, the more things government can do.
I agree with them. Do we have anything to add?
Okay, then the next one is, I apologize, we have to be brief here, just want to make sure we get through these. The next question is from Pete. Oh, question's in the front. With a stroke of the pen, the PA Game Commission just eliminated 15,000 acres of private property in Elk and Jefferson County. What can be done to stop these mass land purchases? I'm not on the game in, are you on game and fish, anybody? Unfortunately, none of us are on the game and fish committee. I hadn't heard about that. The way the state law is, laws get passed over the years that authorizes the Pennsylvania Game Commission to basically, you know, manage game, and a lot of things they're able to do with the existing law. I mean, not to sound too simplistic, but there might be a law that says the Game Commission, you know, has to manage the deer, so they're authorized to make regulations to make that happen. We don't vote on most of the things, like, I don't think we had to vote on allowing crossbows in hard-to-receive, and that was something they were authorized to do. And I think something like a license increase, we have to vote on, but, but we don't really have a vote on, you know, if they sell, if they, you know, post a piece of property, or they sell a piece of property... sell a piece of property, or buy property. We don't really get a say in that.
No, I do think it's disturbing, though, when we see more private land go into state, state land. There is a piece of legislation that Representative Marty Plaza from McKeen County is introducing. It's called the Hill of Payment in Lieu of Taxes, because when the Game Commission, or any state agency, takes over private land that can't be developed, we're losing tax revenue from property taxes. So his legislation is to increase, I believe the Hill right now, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes is around $3.50, and his legislation would increase it to $5.
Okay, then the next question is from Cindy. How has the Obamacare healthcare affected Pennsylvania's budget? Kathy, I think, is trying to find that number. Pennsylvania, we cover about 2.3 million people on different state medical programs. That's people, you know, low-income people that have their, you know, medical systems coverage through this day, elderly people that have to live in nursing homes, you know, foster kids, people with disabilities. We're covering about one person out of every six people in Pennsylvania. And when you look at that chart over here on the spending, of the welfare spending, almost all the welfare spending is for the different medical programs. About 25% of the entire general fund budget is for the medical programs. And with Obamacare, the states are asked to increase the number of people that are on, you know, the medical programs the state offers, and the federal government supposedly would pay 100% of the cost for the first year, and over a several-year period, it reduces down to where a few years from now, they would pay 90% of the cost, and the state would pay the other 10%. Now, if we're already spending, you know, several billion dollars a year, we're already covering one out of every six people, and with the federal government spending a trillion dollars a year, they don't have, every year the deficit seems to go up about a trillion dollars. I don't think the federal government's really going to keep their end of the deal. I think it's more than adequate, the state taxpayers, you know, covering one out of every six people, and I don't think we need to make it one out of every five people. I think it's important that we make sure, you know, anybody that has a disability, you know, the working poor, the elderly that need nursing home care, it's important that we make sure, you know, they're covered by these programs. But there has to be an upper limit of how many people the taxpayers can afford to cover, and so I don't think we're going to, you know, go along with the Medicaid expansion that the president wants, but that's just my opinion.
Definitely the Medicaid expansion would affect the budget, but I think one of the things that affects the people of Pennsylvania from the Affordable Care Act is that Work Week, that making a full-time job at 30 hours. And we've seen some real consequences to that component of Obamacare. People working, especially the lower-income wage jobs, your franchises, and your restaurants, where if the owner can't afford the over 50 employees, they're cutting people back on their work hours per week. And I think that's had a real negative impact on families. And that, I think, is one of the most negative things about that bill, is what they've done to the Work Week, cutting, making 30 hours a week about full-time. And, but if we did expand Medicaid, and we're still waiting for federal approval for the governor's plan, but as you saw as late as yesterday or today, the administration in Washington is still trying to change unilaterally what they say is in, and what's going to be in law for the Affordable Care Act. So there just doesn't seem to be a consistency with the administration in regard to implementing the law. We're seeing and hearing about states who have entered into exchanges, and they're struggling. States are struggling, and we're all hearing stories of people who don't have insurance, and who quite frankly have just given up, they don't even want to bother. So I think it has a lot of impact, and I, I've heard of one person who told me they were able to log on the website, and they thought they actually got a decent plan under the Affordable Care Act, and I'm sure there's others. But our state, this is the example I like to use. Way back in the 70s, when we, the federal government drew up laws for special education, the federal government promised to fund and educate special education at 40% of a state's cost. Right now in Pennsylvania, they fund 17% of special education cost. So their track record is not a very good one. So for the state to expand medical assistance, to accept the federal money, there's a lot of us who don't believe that that money from the federal government is going to be forthcoming after so many years. Remember, our nation is $17 trillion in debt. So it's hard to, for me, to believe that that money would be forthcoming.
It's hard not to make this a federal conversation, I think, but part of Affordable Care Act already started in Pennsylvania in January, so we have the commonwealth that to start meeting some of the requirements. And I read a statistic the other day that by sometime in 2015, one in four Pennsylvanians will be age 60 or over. So one of them is me. And so requirements for services for folks in the Department of Public Welfare will include those folks and all the new people on Medicaid. What it is, is a whole lot more pressure, which the folks on the other side of the aisle don't seem to mind too much. They want to add another 40,000 people in Pennsylvania to the welfare rolls. It's hard to say no to that, but what it means is, there aren't enough revenues to cover all those expenses. The pressure is, do we raise income tax? Everybody who wants an income tax to be raised, put your hand up. Nobody's putting their hand up. You have to draw the line somewhere. We're fighting the battle. One thing that the governor did in resisting going with the federal program for as long as he did, when he finally did say, okay, we'll work with you, he said that it has to be federal exchange, which means the administration never really thought the states would let that responsibility stay in Washington. I think they assumed we would take it on, but by making it their, leaving it in their house, it makes it their problem to figure out how to fix it.
I did want to add, too. You know, in Pennsylvania, we have done, I believe, a very good job of covering our children under the CHIP program. And under Governor Corbett, we've done away with a waiting list for CHIP, for children who do not have coverage. And the CHIP program is really a model program for other states to follow. And so I think that as far as our children, we can be very proud that our children are covered. And I think that's a very positive thing that Pennsylvania has done, and has been a leader for the nation in our services for children.
One final quick thing on that note. I want to make sure I'm clear. That 2.3 million people that we cover on the state medical programs, those are the state programs. That doesn't even count the federal Medicare program. So there's 2.3 million people in Pennsylvania that are on the state programs. Well, most people 65 and older, they're on the federal Medicare program. Now, some get Medicaid also to help with nursing home expenses and stuff, but, so you can see that the large number of people that are on government insurance, and again, you have to have a limit. In the budget proposal, about, I found the number, about $6.7 billion would be for the different medical programs. So it is a significant part of the budget. The last question we have up here is from Michael, and the question is, with all the layoffs caused by Joy and GE, what is the state doing to help improve or bring in employees to the region? I've always believed that the state, and the government, you know, everybody in the campaign is saying, oh, I'm going to run for office, and I'm going to create jobs. Well, you know what? I've never said that, because the government cannot create jobs. What we can do is, we can stay out of the way and allow companies to create jobs. We can back off on regulations, we can reduce taxes, we can make sure there's a good educated workforce to work at these companies, but, you know, we cannot create jobs. All we can do is not interfere when companies are trying to create jobs.
I agree. We need to create a business-friendly environment for business to locate here, and that goes back to your question. But I don't believe that we should be offering those Koz zones, or because it, because of the businesses that have been established in the area for a long time. I mean, it's really, it really isn't fair. But I am aware of those two businesses laying off, and I know when Elwood in Urban was closing, we were very fortunate that that business was picked up by another businessman. And hopefully your, the economic development, economic development people, the Northwest Commission, and other people are, you know, marketing and looking for other businesses to come into the area to replace, to replace those that we're losing.
Not to be outdone, I ran on a ticket of being pro-business, which I am, for 40 years I was in private business. I think right now, what can be done in northwestern Pennsylvania is to do what's legal and acceptable to help the Marcellus Shale organizations. When they first came to town, back in 2008, 2009, they had to bring a lot of people from Texas, Arkansas, and so forth, because those were the folks that understood how to do the drilling. According to the latest statistic I've seen now, new hires which are taking place, there are now four out of five new hires are Pennsylvanians. I think that's a step in the right direction. So, you know, whether you're an environmentalist or a pro-business guy, natural gas is the future of the country. It's going to help us get away from Mideast oil, and probably bring the commonwealth of Pennsylvania back around to greatness, I think.
All right. That concludes the rest of the questions that we had. It's about 7:27, and Pitt was very gracious to let us have the auditorium until 7:30. So all three of us would like to thank the campus for allowing us to use the opportunity, or use, the opportunity to use the auditorium. And I'd like to thank everybody for participating tonight. I'd love to thank everybody for asking the questions, and I'm glad that, you know, all of you turned out here tonight. And if anybody wants to talk about any of these things in more detail, you can contact us, and we can talk about them in more detail. And I have Kathy and Lisa say goodnight as well.
I just want to thank you, and I am looking forward to campaigning here for the 65th legislative district, and getting to know all of you, and more about Titusville and Spartansburg. And I really appreciate you coming out tonight on such a cold day, and staying involved with your legislators. It's really important, I believe, for citizens to be involved and to be knowledgeable about what's going on. And it's even more important for us to hear from you and to hear what your concerns are. So thank you for being here.
Great. Thank you very much. I want to say quickly, I'm going to be working on a couple of things this year. Marcellus Shale being one of them, I just touched on that. I hope to be working on pension reform issues as well. And it turns out, in Pennsylvania, we have a prescription drug program as well, which is leading, unfortunately, a lot of people into heavier usage of other drugs, including heroin. I'm on the Human Services Committee, which is dealing with that in a direct way, and we're passing legislation which makes it more difficult for pharmacists and doctors who may not be on the up and up to continue to give people multiple prescriptions for these prescription drugs. And we've also passed legislation to stop pharmacists from out of state, such as Ohio, West Virginia, New York, for doing it willy-nilly without checking with our database. So that's just one thing we didn't talk about tonight, but I'm kind of proud of the work on that. Thank you very much.